All right, it is seven o'clock by my watch, so we will call to order the Tuesday, number twentieth, City Council meeting.
Thank you. Councilman Becker will be joining us in a little bit. Councilman Hartwick here, Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Schultz.
Here.
President Shear.
Here. Agenda item three this evening was Public Hearings three A is the public hearing related to state and federal aid for the improvements at the Fort Atkinson Municipal Airport.
Thanks, I'll get a short presentation here. So the, the Fort Atkinson Municipal Airport, first of all, as everybody know, we have an airport. One of the greatest pieces of infrastructure we have in the city. And, and those of you that, that have been out there and utilize it would, I think, agree. The, the funding mechanism for nearly all the projects comes through the federal government administered by the state. At the airport, the most recent project that we did out there was, we upgraded the fuel system. So it's credit card ready and we have two types of fuel among three tanks out there. Improvement over our, our previous, basically on your honor fuel system that was out there. So we've seen a lot more use of that, both from our resident pilots as well as transient pilots. In order to keep up with the projects and the investments that the government would like us to make in the airports, we have to put together a list of projects that we intend to try to accomplish in the coming years. And those projects fall roughly into two categories. One is maintenance and that is just simply taking care of what we have. The other is capital investment. So that would be the construction of new hangars out there, purchase of new snow equipment, runway expansions, things like that. We're not committed to any of these types of projects, but if they are not included in our wish list, if you will, then we cannot pursue them. The biggest project that we need to undertake is an airport master plan and that airport master plan will lay out several decades worth of not only projects, but uses and expectations for the airport. That's a fairly significant effort that is being required of all airports in Wisconsin. And so that's one of the things that's, that is on our list, tops of our list, frankly. Right behind the maintenance projects. The funding, as I said, all comes through the FAA. Airports across the country are very well funded. We have received seventy five thousand dollars in cash reimbursements through various COVID era funding mechanisms. That seventy five thousand dollars is essentially in the airport account and does not have any strings attached to it. And that's important because of what I'm about to say. Most of the projects that we, that we take on at the airport require anywhere from a three percent up to a 10% local match. Some of them can be accomplished without any match and that's fairly recent using again, some of the B I L or bipartisan infrastructure money that's coming down. So you, you may see some projects that we don't actually have to pay anything towards coming in the future, but it's always important to know that we're going to use airport funds to fund airport projects. That's always something that we've endeavored to maintain here at the city. That the airport revenue, which is composed largely of airport fuel tax and hangar rentals and things of that nature is used to pay for those matches when we do large projects. We also have some additional funds coming down, as I mentioned, through the B I L. The requirements and timeline of that is, it's coming into better focus now, but still isn't quite enough for me to map out the next four years or so of, of funding opportunities there. And then there's always discretionary funding, which is for large projects. We have not tapped into this in the past, but a project that might fall into this category, should we choose to take it on, would be extending the runways so that we can get jet traffic out there. That would require purchase of property and some pretty significant investment. I don't see the need to do that immediately, but we have had conversations with users that have been interested in that. Believe it or not. So all of this stuff, as I said, kind of comes under this master plan for what, what we want to see our airports continue to be and perhaps endeavor to be in the future. So the reason for the, the public hearing is to do exactly what I just told you about, to present publicly why it is that we're interested in trying to come up with this list, why we're of projects, why we want to make sure that we're committing at a council level, the resources that I've just laid out, including my own time and the time of others towards continued management of the airport. So the resolution that has been, or that will be become before you, I think later in the agenda, essentially is the, the signed and sealed commitment to continuing to manage and improve Fort Atkinson's airport. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions of the council or I believe we have the public hearing as well.
Andy, I'm just curious, what, what is the situation if, okay, we commit to investing a certain amount from airport funds that are available for a project to kind of hit that match number and then the quotes for that project come in significantly higher and we no longer have the funds to meet the match for that. What's the, like, what kind of position does that put the city in?
We've, we've been slightly in that position with fuel system that we, but we had some issues in the performance of that. The Bureau of Aeronautics stepped, stepped in in that situation and I think would step in in, in the situation that you're describing. They do a very good job of moving the funding around to various airports. We don't do a $500,000 project every year. And they recognize that. So they have money that has various requirements on it in terms of matches to be able to support those situations. Again, we haven't had that exactly happen, but that'd be my expectation should it occur. And, and we're never bound to do anything, right? I mean, if, if we have a change in condition, no matter what it is that we have under contract. The city has safeguards in, in federal and state law that essentially allow us to adjust and maintain. We're not ever obligated to pay anything out when the conditions change, right? So if we figured it was a $500,000 project and suddenly it comes in at a million dollars, we don't have to buy a million dollars worth of whatever we've, you know, asked to build, so.
Andy, the interested parties in the Navy jet traffic someday, are they corporations? Are they just private pilots who wanted to fly here?
Yeah, the, the two specifically that we've heard from were businesses in town that have corporate headquarters, I think that are regional. They use the runways. I believe they can use the runway in sort of a marginal area, you know, fly in with a half tank of gas type of thing. So that their weight is able to, to take off and land, but they have indicated that if we had a longer runway, they would be interested in utilizing it more.
Would that bring business and jobs here?
Certainly wouldn't be a negative. I don't know if I would hang my hat that jobs come into the, to the equation because of a longer runway, but there are, and Councilman Shear can probably attest this better than I, there are businesses out there that I'm sure we have not been approached by that look for these requirements when scouting for locations for various airport related construction or, or business opportunities.
How do you feel about the gas situation out there? I know I was very pleased when you moved it from kind of a good old boy system to get out your credit card and you'd be able to pump your gas.
Yeah, we, we saw a pretty significant improvement in transient use and, and the, the one time, if you, if you'd like to observe that yourselves is during the, the E A A up in Oshkosh. So there's planes constantly flying over and our airport is actually a very nice airport with very accessible gas to fuel up, maybe take a bit of a rest before entering into, to Oshkosh to go to that airshow. So we see a pretty significant uptick. And the fact that you can use a credit card, just like you or I would on the highway with our vehicle is a huge advantage to, to us.
I'm just going to pass along kind of a grumble remark about it that I know from a very close friend of mine who was a pilot out there, they grumbled because our gas prices are too tall out there.
Yeah.
And that local, other local airports are $2 a gallon cheaper than us. And I thought, I don't want to hurt your feelings, but it may be intentional that we're not trying to create a profitable gas station out there. We're trying to make gas available if you needed.
Yes, we are trying to, to, to be profitable, but not in that way. We don't buy enough gas. So the gas that's in the tanks right now, I think I bought in August when gas was a heck of a lot more expensive than it is right now. So our price doesn't fluctuate as much because we don't sell the same volume. So that's $4 a gallon gas that's in there right now that I have to sell at four bucks a gallon and we're all paying $2 a gallon.
I, I feel I've done my due diligence and addressed this question.
I, I've got a few questions. So you mentioned the COVID funding is sitting in the airport fund. Did that COVID funding come to us because we have an airport?
It did. So the CARE, I don't know what the acronyms stand for, Councilman Schultz, but the, the, the three acronyms there are specific to airports.
Okay. And the same with the bipartisan infrastructure bill, like that would be because we have an airport?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, they, yeah, I, I, these are airport specific. Yeah. So if we did not have an airport, we would not be receiving anything from the FAA or those.
All right. Thanks for making it clear that it's not being diverted from any other city usage.
And not something we would have the ability to use elsewhere, correct?
No.
I just want to point out, since we're talking about it, I think the, the 1.4 million after that 75,000 is kind of the, the key figure there because that 75,000 really opens up the opportunity for almost 1.4 million in improvements. It is very rare that as a city or as a municipality, we get the opportunity to do that kind of lift at that price day. So with that, if there's nothing else from the council, I will open up the public hearing for public comment on this agenda item. First call. Second call. Third and final call regarding the public hearing of the Fort Atkinson Municipal Airport. We will close the public hearing on this item. Takes us to agenda item three B, which is the public hearing relating to contract modifications and the fair scheduled changes for the shared ride taxi service in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Yeah, thank you. This, this is not as well funded as the airport. The, the taxi situation in Fort Atkinson for 2023 is, is a bit tenuous. The, the problem that we have is as follows. We have lost about $100,000 of our annual revenue that comes in through the fares that folks pay to ride the taxi cab. Coupled with a driver shortage, we have been unable, not we, I should say, the contractor running incorporated, which we all know as Brown Cab, has been unable to staff drivers to fulfill the full 15,900 hours of service that they provide in a given year. Right now, we're trend, trending to be about 8,000 hours as of the last numbers I saw for November for the year. So just about half of what we would normally expect. That shortage then obviously has a change in service. So the consistency in the cab being reliable and the expectations change dramatically for those, for those users of the cab as a significant part of their transportation. Last is a federal subsidy. So during, the cab is subsidized and has been for quite some time. Fifty six percent of the cost of the taxi contract is paid for by the federal government. Forty four percent is picked up by the city of Fort Atkinson. That forty four percent that we pay for is offset by the revenue generated by the taxi fares. So similar to the airport, those that are using the taxi are paying for the taxi. We've been able to successfully manage that in that way as basically a known net cost to the city for quite some time. There's been years where it's been, you know, a few thousand dollars short, where city funds have been used to make up for that. But by and large, the contract, which is well over $300,000 a year is, is operated at no net cost to the city. That will change as we look into 2023. So for the last two years, I'm sorry, 2021 and 2020, the federal government stepped in with the COVID funding and said, don't worry about the taxi, we'll take care of it. So we, we literally did not have to worry about the 44% of city responsibility. In 2022, this year that we're finishing up, they increase, well, they, they stepped it back from 100% to 74%. So we still had enough money, given the 74% of coverage and the reduced number of hours. Remember Brown Cab was only providing half the number of hours of service. So therefore there's only half the cost. So with that, we were able to squeak through 2022 at again, a no net cost for the city. In 2023, that is not going to be the case. So the DOT has indicated that the federal subsidy will be back to the 56% for 2023. So that problem creates a significant projected shortfall in funding the taxi for 23. The proposal or what we're going to try to do to offset that is as follows. We are going to change the contracts with Brown Cab to reduce the number of hours from 15,900 to 9,000 hours. Second, we are going to increase the hourly rate for those reduced contract service hours. Now this may seem counterintuitive, but the discussions with Brown Cab were that at those contracts, hours, 9,000 hours, they are not able to recoup their fixed expenses, which have been essentially, they, they haven't been able to do that for several years. The cost to the city for that increase from $35.23 to $36.73 would be about $5,900. So it is an increase in the cost overall. But to be quite frank, they don't have to accept the reduction from 15,000 hours down to 9,000. So it was a little bit of a give and take in terms of the contract negotiation. The third element of this is an across the board fair, across the board fair increase on average of 61%. And I have some specific numbers of those fair increases here in a minute. This is significant and you'll see why in a, in a slide here in a minute. And then finally, the reduced service hours will require the schedule to change. So we have typically had a schedule where the cab, Brown Cab was required to have up to five cabs on the road at peak time, peak demand times. That will be reduced down to two cabs on the road during those peak demand times. In addition, we will eliminate the midnight rides, we call them. So Friday and Saturday night, and we just instituted this, I think, within the last five years. We have a cab available from up till 2:00 AM or 2:30 AM in the morning when the bars close for folks to be able to ride and we will eliminate that service. That is a very difficult service for Brown Cab staff. And we did have discussions with Fort PD about the impacts of that and they were fine with that. The schedule, as I mentioned, the contract hours, the rate and the schedule changes here are a little bit more in depth. If we reduce the, the overall contract hours, we are able to, to reduce about $101,000 of potential obligations to pay Brown Cab. So that 15,900 down to 9,000 hours saves us about six figures. As I mentioned here earlier, running incorporated asked for a contract hourly increase. Again, that's only about $5,900 cost to the city to accommodate that increase in their hourly contract rate. And then again, the late night fee, the late night fares, as I mentioned, will be eliminated on Friday and Saturday evening. In addition to a reduction in the number of cabs, but the cab will still remain active largely during the hours it's expected to today, which is roughly 6:30 AM to 7:00 PM, most weekdays. And this is just a breakdown of the schedule. These are the number of cabs per hour. So as I said, 7:00 AM is very busy. So they have five, four, five cabs on the road at 7:00 AM during the weekdays. That's going to be reduced down to just two. And so when we multiply the number of cabs on the road over a given year, that's how we come up with the number of contract hours that they're able to fulfill. You'll note at the bottom of this that these contract hours do not add up to 9,000. And that's consistent with what we've done in the past. There are holidays that we require them to work and they do have the ability with this change in contract, if we do get more drivers, they can staff up a bit, which would hopefully be done to meet demand. So there is a little bit of leeway in there with respect to hopefully being able to get some more drivers and more service hours.
Andy, not to interrupt you there, but
Please.
I mean, when was the last time that they even had five drivers that could be on at one time?
I, I can't answer that question, but I would, I would suspect it's been a while. The fair increase that I talked about, this is where I wanted to, to indicate just how long we've had the fares that we do. So this is back, data back to 2013. It may go even further back than that. We have not changed the, the senior fare. At least since 2013, we did increase the base adult fare, which is what the majority of us probably in this room would be paying from $3 to $3.25 in 2017. The student fare has never been increased back to 2013, perhaps earlier. And that after 10 fare that I mentioned, that's going to go away, but that was instituted in 2017. The agency fare is a fare that is used for the managed care organizations in the city of Fort Atkinson. There's a lot of reasons why that fare is so much higher and it is completely legal and expected. We have managed that fare fairly actively through the years. The managed care organizations are reimbursed for that. And, and they're required to provide transportation to their residents. So that, that fare has been very useful for us, frankly, in keeping fares low for, for everybody who's not in the managed care organization. Unfortunately, with the loss of, of that ridership, that has a huge impact on our overall fares. So the increase that we're seeing is down in the, in the bottom right hand corner. So we're currently, adult fares are three and a quarter. They're going to go up to $5. Student fares at 250 will go up to $4. Senior fares at $2 will go to $3.50 as will the disabled fare. I'm not completely certain why we have a disabled fare, to be quite honest with you. But that senior fare, I think, covers everything that we have in there. And then the agency fare would go up to, to $12. So the, the, these numbers are real. 71% of the riders are in that senior or disabled category. And so this, this has an effect on that population. I think we would all consider to be somewhat vulnerable within our community. But unfortunately, in order to continue to, to keep the cab, the cab solvent in 2023, these, these increases are, are going to be warranted. There are similar increases of similar magnitude coming in from around the, the state. So we are a little bit in the vanguard, I would say with this, but certainly not alone. And then this is just some, some numbers to show how things will shake out. So here in, in this scenario, we have various service hours, 8,000 to 15,900 at the rates that were proposed by Brown Cab. These are kind of tiered rates based upon the number of hours. Here is the expected revenue based upon our ridership this year. And this is what we would be facing at the end of 2023 if we didn't make any changes. So if we left the cab contract as is, and they were able to fulfill 15,900 hours in 2023, again, a bit far fetched, I think, but worst case scenario, we would owe about $149,000 at the end of the year. All the way back to owing about $33,000 under a service of 8,000 hours, which is similar to what we're looking at this year with what they've been able to accomplish. If we make the fair improvements, or I'm sorry, the fair increases that we talked about, that same analysis is run. So at 8,000 hours, we'd be looking at about $25,000 of, of additional revenue. We don't get to keep that. That goes back to the, the federal government. What we're recommending is here at that 9,000 hour level, we will have $11,000 of buffer, if you will, with respect to the overall contract for the cab. So if these numbers hold true, at the end of the year, we will have $11,000 of more fare revenue than we actually need to pay the taxi cab. These were, this presentation was provided to the Transportation and Traffic Review Committee at their meeting last week, I think it was. And, and they asked some very good questions about it. And we had a good discussion and overall moved to, to not approve this, but to move this on to consideration of the city council. The public hearing that we're in the middle of right now is required anytime we change the overall schedule for the taxi and the fares. So this has been noticed and is all part of the process of, of getting public input on this particular service that's provided in Fort Atkinson. With that, I think there's a quick summary slide in there. I will note that we do have a very significant issue in 2024. So this is the last year, 2023 of our contract. In 2024, it will go back out to bid and we will see very significant increases in that hourly cost to provide the service at that time without an increase in ridership. So city staff were looking to, to hold some meetings in the first quarter of 2023 to look at that longer term aspect of the, of the taxi here in Fort Atkinson. But tonight we're dealing just with our, our 2023 taxi situation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I've got just a couple. Do you think that the fair increase would decrease ridership and pose a risk to the revenue model that you propose?
I do. And it's a, it's a bit of a chicken and egg thing. When we had full ridership that was known, and this was from Brown Cab who operates these transit or running incorporated, who operates these across Southern Wisconsin. You would see a, a dip for a couple of months in ridership and then it would return. I don't know that we have full ridership. So we may have folks here that just are required to ride the taxi because they really don't have any other options. So we may not necessarily see that dip in there. So I can't predict the future, but, but there is cause to, to be concerned about that, I guess.
And the other question I have is, as you're demonstrating, how many cabs were available versus the new proposal? Did Brown Cab provide any data as like how utilized those cabs were? And like if they were only 40% used during the hour and if they reduce down to two cabs per hour, that maybe they'd still be at 80% utilization and still not at, you know, 100%.
Yeah, that's a great question. I, I did not pose that to them. So I, I'll have to follow up on that because I think that is, that is important to understand exactly, you know, how many minutes of the hour are they actually on a, a call, right?
Yeah, just as what I've been seeing driving around town is I've, ever since this brought to my attention, I've noticed them a lot more. So I'm kind of curious is making sure, you know, you know, a lot of residents who maybe depend on it that, you know, they're not going to be facing significant wait times or, or not, just not being able to get a ride if, if they depend on it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll follow up with Brown Cab on that and see if I can get some information to you.
Any other questions from our council?
Do you think part of the ridership issue, I mean, granted COVID was a definite mark that's, that staggered it. I mean, riding in public places with where other people have been was not as tall on somebody's list. With COVID going farther behind us, will the ridership pick up, you think, on that?
I thought so, but we would, we should have seen it by now and we're not. Now that could also be because Brown Cab, I mean, they're not out there for half the hours that they should be, right? So what that translates into is longer wait times, you know, whereas pre-COVID, maybe you call for a cab and you've got it within 15, 20 minutes. Now, you know, you may call for a cab and have to wait an hour. And so I, I think, I think that has a pretty significant impact on the reliability. So it could be a combination of factors there.
And not a question, but I just, for people's information, I think that's just the, the hard part of what this comes down to is that I don't think anyone is excited about any sort of fair increase to individuals who need this service. But when the main factors playing into the quality of the service are things that the city really has ultimately no control over in terms of retaining and recruiting staff and having cars available. To Andy's point, it's, it's just a matter of making sure that yes, this is a vital service, but we also have to make sure it's not a vital service that isn't all of the sudden costing 150,000 unbudgeted dollars for the city. So to Andy's point, you know, going forward to see if and where this can fit in the budget, hopefully bringing other community partners into it who have members of their organization or employees of their company that frequently rely on and, and use the cab service. And I just want to add too, I know in my previous professional position, this has been a conversation for years about the, the struggles and the issues and concerns with the cab service. And there are a lot of different community coalitions and, and organizations and groups working together right now to try to say, what could we do? Could, could we start getting our own vehicles? Could we kind of have our own service available for our clients? So there is a lot of additional communication happening in Fort Atkinson from groups saying, how else could we start to address? So there is a lot of additional communication happening in Fort Atkinson from groups saying, how else could we start to address this?
All right, well, we will now open this item for public hearing. Uh, again, public hearing is similar to public comment, but it is only for this item. I will request that we keep it within the three minute mark if you have a a question or concern regarding this agenda item. This is a first call. If you're interested in speaking, you'll uh address the podium. Uh, we use to say state your name, address, and the subject matter. I know you're signed up for something else, but this one is only pertaining to taxi service.
Right. Uh, sorry. Ron Martin, four oh nine, native drive Fort Atkinson. I had a couple of questions that come to mind. Um, does the city of Jefferson contract with running for brown cab services? Okay, so there's some cost sharing uh possibilities there. Maybe, but Jefferson would provide additional uh need for these services. Um, the other question is, do you know um what the current um rate of pay is for the drivers?
I I know it's in the ten dollar range.
Andy, can you be on a microphone for?
We we do know that the rate of pay is somewhere in the neighborhood of of ten dollars an hour. Um, we we did ask that question of them.
Okay, um. It seems like um increasing the fares by sixty percent and cutting back the hours. You're not going to increase ridership. It's going to have the opposite effect. And I know that there's a lot of factors involved, but I would urge this council along with other groups in the city to take a look at um funding this or finding better solutions to provide seniors, the disabled, people that can't afford cars, or maybe they can't drive any longer, to be able to use this service and use it effectively and cost efficiently. Um, because it it just seems like it's an additional burden on people that can't afford um to, you know, call a cab to go to the store. Um, or maybe they have, they have other issues. They don't have any family in the area that could give them rides and so forth. And this is very vulnerable people that we're talking about that are primarily using the service, seventy-one percent are senior and disabled. Um, we we need to find better solutions um rather than jacking up the fares and um cutting back on the hours.
Thank you. Yes.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Oh, sure.
Mr. Martin, can I ask, do you have any solutions? Do you have thoughts or or suggestions or solutions on the other ways that this issue could be addressed and solved?
Well, if the city would provide increased funding, maybe in connection with Jefferson or um other entities um to increase uh the funding for the cab service, you might be able to pay them more, pay the drivers more and attract more drivers to provide better service.
So the one thing I will say to that is just that is also a contract issue with the Runnings Inc. company. So in my previous position, I used to run a program that was through Brown Cab. Um, and because each municipality's contract is different and is related to inner-city traffic or inner-city rides, it's very, very rare that they will cover those kind of Jefferson to Ford or Ford to Jefferson without very pre-scheduled and and pre-planned things. Um, so it's pretty difficult to to find a way based on the way that they run their business to be able to set up contracts that way.
Okay. Well, it I I don't have all the solutions and I haven't really given this a lot of thought, but I I can come up with some potential solutions if you're interested and email them to uh the city manager if if that would help. But there um this new contract for next year and you're going to approve it tonight, I'm sure you will. And we'll, you'll be locked into the fair increases with um with running for the next year, and they're going to provide a lower level of service. So I just think there, those are some concerns that um for the the seniors and disabled, especially in this community. It's it's not going to be good going forward.
Appreciate the comments. I do hope you know that our our goal in adjusting rates is to ensure that there is a service to rely on for the next year. So um not that we, again, willingly want to go out there and raise rates on any of our constituents, but to have a service is better than to not have a service in this go-around. Uh, this will be in uh a second call for public comment, both via Zoom or in person. You're more than welcome to speak at any point, Bruce.
Um, and Andy, uh, I see there's a lot of thought put into what your plan is. I believe a lot of hard work and a lot of thinking, a lot of math. Is this our, the city's position? Or is it in a joint position between us and Brown Cab? Is Brown Cab on board with what you're doing?
Yeah, the the they are. Um, the thing we have to remember, well, a couple of things um to to uh to note. We don't set the the um the pay for the drivers, the the Brown Cab uh in Running Incorporated does uh as employees of that organization. Um, the second thing is uh that is Brown Cab is the only game in town. So we we put this contract out to bid for five-year periods, um, three guaranteed years and two option years. We're in the last of our uh our second or our two option years is in two thousand and twenty-three. So should we uh put forward something to Brown Cab saying, hey, you guys need to pay your folks fifteen thousand, fifteen dollars an hour, or you need to, you you need to uh to make up your service contract to fifteen thousand nine hundred as stated. They have the ability to walk away and we don't have another alternative. So it it really does make our our decision-making uh and our um possible choices for solution very narrow uh when it comes down to these sorts of situations. So yes, I I would, to answer your question in a somewhat roundabout way, um, we have to generate more revenue. Um, we don't have anything budgeted in the two thousand and twenty-three budget um for this. Um, but that is always one source of revenue is uh city funds. And the other is uh to generate revenue through um fees, in this case, the increase in fares.
I know that I had served on a taxi committee in years past. And I knew there would, when the gate opened said, everybody wants to bid on this, there wasn't much of a race.
Right. Yeah, we had, we had one uh one bidder. Uh, and we've had that for, I'm not sure how many successive five-year contracts going back um in time, but but that's been the only game in town that we've had.
Would hate to lose that.
Uh, everyone, this is Councilman Becker. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I've been on Zoom. I apologize. I wasn't able to be at council at the start. I'm on my way. Um, I just wanted to say I really appreciate the discussion that that everyone's having. Um, I'm glad there's a recognition that this service is essential to some of our most um, you know, uh, I I want to say disadvantaged, but uh vulnerable uh residents. Um, and I'm, I'm glad that everybody's trying to come together and come up with a solution. Um, I I don't like the fact that we're we're raising rates, you know, everybody knows we're in a recession right now. Everything's expensive for everybody, but I think the plan that that Andy and other members of our uh city staff have put together, it at least guarantees we have a service for one more year because at the current rate we've been going, we all know that's really been at risk. So I appreciate the work and I appreciate the thought that's been put into this.
All right, yeah, just a few, a few other thoughts that are kind of running through my head as I think about this. One, obviously, you know, it's, it is an essential service for those that are vulner- vulnerable in our community. Um, but with the proposal, you know, this does open up, you know, opportunity for, you know, the after-hours, you know, if anyone wants to come in, whether it's uh, you know, another business gig workers like Lyft or Uber, um, or as Megan mentioned, like nonprofit organizations, you know, to fill a gap where a need is. Um, the the thought on the back of my head is, you know, how many businesses or services do we want to subsidize? Um, and I guess that's always a question on the back of my head, and to what extent do we do that? Um, but I do believe that the proposal that you put forth, you know, is a middle ground for everyone. So, thank you.
All right, this is a third and final call for the public hearing regarding the shared ride taxi service. We will now be closing the public hearing. That takes us to agenda item four, which is public comment. Just as a reminder, the city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon. That would be name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comments unless the item is also elsewhere in the agenda. We do have a few people signed up. I'm going to go in order of sign up. Uh, Ron Martin, would you care to join again to discuss taxes? Uh, and ideally taxes that are germane to our taxing jurisdiction?
Oh, thank you. Ron Martin, four oh nine, native drive. I just want to make a couple of comments on the uh fourteen percent increase in our uh property taxes from the city this year. Um, I was uh reading through um some comments that people had on the um large increase in taxes this year. One of them kind of sums up things pretty well. Um, it is really hard for seniors on fixed incomes trying to afford these property taxes. How long can we keep having these increases and stay in our houses? Um, I'm I'm sure that um you know, you you've had the referendum passed with a ten percent increase to have a, you know, city-run um gold-plated ambulance service. That's wonderful. Um, all the city employees, full and part-time, got four percent raises this year. Um, I I can understand why there's an increase, but um this crushing tax burden that we have living in the city of Fort Atkinson, I know for a fact is causing people to move or to sell their houses or to look for relocating because they can no longer afford to live in Fort Atkinson. Um, this also ties into the previous discussion about the taxi service. Uh, people that are living on fixed incomes, uh seniors or those who um can't afford the taxes and can't afford the runaway inflation at nine or ten percent and can't afford everything that um is just going through the roof in price going forward. Um, are they to decide between whether they eat this week or buy their medications or pay their taxes? Because people are making that decision, whether you want to admit it or not, people are having to come to grips with making those type of decisions. And um, I I just want, uh, even though there's probably uh nobody else here, and I know nobody showed up for the um public hearing about the city budget last month, but um there are people out here that live in the city that are going to be uh financially ruined um by the tax increases that are continuing to eat away at any savings they might have. And um, this, this is we're in a dire situation here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Aaron and Mitch Patterson. You can state your names and your address.
Uh, Mitch and Aaron Patterson, fifteen oh five, Stacy Lane. Uh, we are here to discuss the um available Class B intoxicating liquor license.
Uh, we recognize that the council has an important decision to make on January third regarding the available Class B intoxicating liquor license. We would like to take this opportunity to advocate for our business, Patty Shack, before the entire council prior to this meeting. Per the license materials and application, the goal of the license committee and city council in choosing the recipient of a reserved Class B license is to encourage private investment and to garner the greatest economic impact for the city. While we respect that any recipient of this license would benefit from the added revenue, the license appointment does not focus on individual profitability. It has the goal of issuing a license for the highest and best use of the city of Fort Atkinson. Given the previously mentioned guidelines, we believe our entertainment-driven venue, Patty Shack, would be the best fit for the available Class B intoxicating liquor license. Patty Shack will encourage and promote downtown revival, job creation for ten to twenty positions, tourism and room tax benefits, increased business foot traffic, and the opportunity to partner with and market other Fort Atkinson businesses. Our downtown currently has empty storefronts and businesses for rent or for sale. We believe our unique entertainment venue with a full service bar will help create the shift that we need to attract and retain new citizens, businesses, and visitors to Fort Atkinson. We appreciate your consideration and look forward to further discussion on this opportunity.
Thank you. All right, this will be a first call for public comment, both from within uh the chambers or online. This is a second call for public comment. This is a third and final call for public comment. Seeing none, hearing none, we will move right along. Agenda item number five is the consent agenda. As a reminder, the consent agenda that is outlined is presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed, items five A through five H.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries. Agenda item six, petitions, requests, and communications. This evening, we have none. Agenda item seven, resolutions and ordinances. Seven A is the review and possible action relating to a resolution, petitioning the Secretary of Transportation for Airport Improvement Aid and the Agency Agreement and Federal Block Grant Owner Assurances.
So this is, this is what we uh spoke about a minute ago. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that may have come up. Um, but otherwise, this resolution is uh, again, just binding the city towards this commitment um for these uh these FAA funds.
Andy, the only thing I meant to ask, um, is any revenue that is ever generated through the airport required to solely stay within an airport account, or is there ever potential based on improvements or additions there for it to be an additional revenue stream kind of overall for the city?
I don't know. Uh, so with the revenue that we've received from the federal government, that has very strict um uses associated with it, right? Uh, for the airport, um, revenue that's generated through the taxes on the airport fuel and the rent paid by the hangars, I think we have a little more um latitude. Um, we have always kept it in the airport account, but I'm not sure there's a requirement for such.
So uh, last year, we did move this from the general fund to its separate account. So all those funds, revenues from the airport would stay in the airport fund.
Any other questions or discussion? You would entertain a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution. Turn my mic on. I move to adopt the resolution petitioning the Secretary of Transportation for Airport Improvement Aid and to approve the agency agreement and federal block grant owner assurances.
Second.
Motion and the second, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seven B is the review and possible action relating to a resolution urging legislature and governor to fix broken system of funding critical to local services.
So the League of Wisconsin Municipalities was created in eighteen ninety-eight to help Wisconsin cities and villages share ideas and learn from each other to train and provide information to people elected and appointed uh to govern cities and villages and to advocate on their behalf with the Wisconsin Legislature, Governor, and state agencies. And the city of Fort Atkinson is a member of the League. The league's priority for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Wisconsin Legislative Session is critical local services funding. Currently, local governments are primarily funded through property tax revenue and intergovernmental revenue also referred to as state shared revenue. I do have some charts and tables in the packet tonight. The twenty twenty-three general revenue, general fund revenue table chart, I should say, is in, is in that packet and general property tax taxes make up sixty-five percent of the city's general fund budget for twenty twenty-three and intergovernmental revenues make up nineteen percent for a total of eighty-four percent. And property tax revenue is limited by our, by levy limits imposed by state law. The law limits local governments' ability to increase property tax revenue to the percentage of net new construction from the prior year. So in twenty twenty-two, the city's net new construction number was point three four percent, which equated to an allowable levy increase of just over twenty-two thousand dollars. Several of the city's contracted services such as garbage and recycling collection are tied to the increase in Consumer Price Index and increased more than the city's allowable levy increase. So just one contract increased by more than what we were able to levy through our, through the levy limits because of the net new construction. The statutes do allow for local governments to borrow funds outside of the levy limit and to seek voter approval for an increase in property taxes through referendum. The city of Fort Atkinson took both steps in twenty twenty-two, which are reflected in the twenty twenty-two tax bills that were mailed out last week. However, borrowing is not an appropriate way to fund annual operations and the approved public safety referendum in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars will not ever increase. As such, these are not growing or sustainable funding sources. You can also see there's a table showing the declining shared revenues from the state over the last twenty years and how the, the city, the city of Fort Atkinson's municipal aid since two thousand thirteen, which has varied by only about four thousand dollars over that time. So there is a resolution attached to this memo that that resolution was created and distributed by the league to its members. It urges the legislature and the governor to recognize the vital services that local governments provide to our residents and encourages them to work with the league, the Wisconsin Towns Association and the Wisconsin Counties Association to come up with a different additional revenue options other than property taxes to continue to deliver these essential services. So the league is working with representatives from the towns association and the counties association to come up with solutions for funding sources that are more, meaning greater than the current amount, sustainable, meaning that the funding will continue in perpetuity and growing mean, meaning that it is an increase, the increase is somehow tied to the statewide economic conditions. Staff does recommend that the city council adopt the attached resolution urging the legislature and governor to fix the broken system of funding critical local services and direct the city manager to share the signed document with the league and the city's local legislators. Be happy to answer any questions.
I have just one comment. Thank, thank you very much for this. Just as my experience on city council that some of the issues that face our city sit above the level of our local government and that the shared revenue model is basically broken. And that even the state representatives locally that I've met with basically laughed at the idea of revisiting the shared revenue model, which, you know, people continue to vote for the people that don't share the state, you know, tax revenue with local jurisdictions. We've just seen earlier today that, you know, the federal government will help, you know, donate money, your, provide money to make improvements in our, in our airport. But I haven't seen any that have done so to improve EMS services or other services within the city. I'm a lot of them which our city staff has had to, you know, apply for grants. So perhaps maybe it's, you know, the shared revenue model is broken and we have to replace it with writing grants and applying for them constantly to, you know, help fund the things within our city. And, you know, and lastly, as you mentioned, you know, the, as we've heard comments today from, from the public that, you know, taxes are a major concern. Also, we must remember that because of this failure of larger, you know, government representation, that, you know, we've had to bring to the city referendums which our residents voted for. So.
I would urge anybody who has the chance to go online and look at the council packet for this evening, specifically this item. The League of Wisconsin Municipalities has put together some great infographics that you can cross-reference with our infographics that tell our story about our budget. While you may look at the shared revenue number and say, we're only down, you know, two to four thousand dollars. You have to remember that's two to four thousand dollars less that, than what we were receiving in two thousand thirteen. And there's been over ninety million dollars worth of systematic cuts since two thousand and three. It truly has become very, very difficult to have a positive outlook on budgeting at times, especially when you think about that two to four thousand dollars, but right here in their, in their infographics since two thousand eleven, fire and EMS costs have increased by sixteen point seven percent. There are reasons we have had to ask certain things out of our constituents and I would say you have every right to ask us questions and, and want to know why we are doing stuff, but I think it is also extremely important to remember who you vote for in the, in Madison can affect your quality of life right here in Fort Atkinson. And because I feel so strongly about that, I seldom if ever will get the chance to do this as president, but I would move to adopt the resolution urging the legislature and governor to fix the broke system of funding critical local services and direct the city manager to share the signed document with the League of Cities Local Legislators. Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor. Well, you want discussion? Well, go ahead.
How long can I go?
Like everybody else, right?
No, I, I shouldn't. I could say so much about this, but, but the comments we've heard already were, were a really good summary. One thing that I think doesn't get brought up enough, you know, come January, there'll be the state budget process. They pass a state budget every two years and as our city manager and other, others have noted, there's no state department that argues or in favor of funding for the local services that we provide. There's no Department of Local Law Enforcement. There's no Department of State Fire and EMS. In other states, the state governments do fund a lot of those services. Wisconsin currently is dead last in funding for local law enforcement. And yeah, it's a broken system that we have. I don't like the property tax. It, it is a failed system. I understand it is hurting a lot of people. I don't like the increase that my property tax bill I just got in the mail yesterday reflects. I don't like any of that. I would love to see the state of Wisconsin go to a model where instead of relying on that one big bucket, they had lots of little buckets, but right now, that's not what we have. At the end of the day, though, we still have services to provide. I'm not interested in seeing Fort Atkinson become a city where, you know, if you, you're having a heart attack, you don't know where the ambulance is going to show up, or if there's a fire, it takes a half hour for the fire truck to get there. And I don't think that that would be a way to attract young talent and young families to our community either. So we're going to continue being a city that provides great services. And I hope at some point leaders at the state level will recognize how they have failed us. They're sitting on a six and a half billion dollar budget surplus that's tax money that belongs to all of us that is not coming back to us. They're just sitting on it and playing political games. They're fighting back and forth, but they're not talking about addressing local needs. So I absolutely support this resolution. I hope maybe some leaders at the state level will take notice, but I'm frankly not going to hold my breath. So we all have to keep doing what we can do at the local level to keep the city going because that's where we're at. Thanks.
I just think it's worth noting too, and really highlighting here that this is a resolution put forth by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. These budgeting issues, these property tax changes, this is not a Fort Atkinson exclusive community problem. This is a problem for communities and cities and municipalities across our state. Because to everyone's point already, the system is not working for municipalities. So this is Fort Atkinson joining in the League of Municipalities putting this out. I think it's also worth noting, if anyone cares to or wants to look at the packet, there is a letter included in here that was co-written by the mayor of Brookfield and the mayor of Madison, who in the very first two lines referenced the fact that this is coming from one very red community and one very blue community. This is not a Republicans think it isn't a problem and Democrats do or vice versa. This is all city municipality leaders, council people, aldermen, city managers coming together and saying we are tired of having to go to our community for more money. We are tired of having to ask for public safety referendums, services that are critical and necessary. There has to be a different way to fund that than to continue to go to people, which is I don't think the first choice of anyone up here, but when you are in a position that that is really your only choice, that is the route that we have had to go. And that's what this is really focusing on. The city does not just have one full bucket of money that we get to decide exactly how that is spent. There are a lot of restrictions and requirements that, that the city is legally bound to when it comes to budgeting and, and setting tax limits and levy limits. So I just, I think it's important for people to understand that this is a much bigger, broader issue. And again, for those to, to previous points too, we welcome those questions. We welcome that discussion. But we also hope you are having that discussion and asking those questions with the people who are representing our community in Madison who really have a lot more power over changing that structure than, than we do at this table.
We do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion before I hastily take the vote? All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Takes us to agenda item eight, which is reports of officers, boards, and committees. Eight A is the city manager's report.
Thank you. So staff from our police and fire departments and members of our management team participated in ICS training at the fire department on December seventh and eighth. We had hands-on training relating to emergency management, incident command, as well as resource management, public relations, and logistics. Our management team will meet in January to review what we learned and how we can improve certain processes and plan for emergency events. And on December ninth, several members of the city's management team and chamber members attended a women's leadership seminar in Wausau sponsored by the Wisconsin City and County Management Association. It was a great opportunity to learn about communication and effective leadership as well as engage in some team building. On December fifteenth, staff mailed the twenty twenty-two tax bills to property owners in the city. The city's portion of the tax bill did increase mainly due to the voter approved referendum, public safety referendum. And recall that this increase in taxes will pay for a full-time twenty-four seven fire and EMS department that will respond to calls within ninety seconds. This is a better, more robust service. And if you do have questions on tax bills, please feel free to review the information on the city's website and then call city hall with questions. I, I can help. There will be a swearing in ceremony for the new fire and EMS department members on December twenty-sixth at one P M. At the fire station. The city council and the police and fire commission have been invited. It is, it is a, because of that, it is a public meeting. No action will be taken by either body at that event. And we're proud and excited to welcome our twelve newest city employees. On December twelfth, members of the city's management team met with our information technology provider to discuss cybersecurity. As municipalities and other public entities continue to be targeted with ransomware and phishing attempts, it's important that staff be educated on threats and trust the additional software and efforts to prevent such attacks. And twenty twenty-three staff will continue to work with R I T provider and other experts in the field to right-size our cybersecurity efforts. City staff is actively, actively preparing for a snow event later this week, so please keep an eye on the city's website and social media pages for more information on the storm as its path and impact become a little bit more apparent. And for those of you interested in running for a seat on the city council, there's still time to obtain papers and collect signatures. All nomination paperwork is due to the city clerk's office by Tuesday, January third at five P M. And just note that city offices will be closed on Monday, December twenty-sixth and Monday, January second in observance of holidays. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And agenda item nine is unfinished business. This evening we have none. Ten is new business. Ten A is the review and possible action to authorize the city manager to execute the twenty twenty-three joint powers agreement with the Jefferson, with Jefferson County for the county nine-one-one emergency system.
So annually, Jefferson County seeks action from all of the county's municipalities to enter into this joint powers agreement for county nine-one-one emergency system. The agreement states that if an emergency services vehicle is dispatched in response to a nine-one-one call for service through the county's dispatch system, that vehicle and its personnel will render aid to the persons needing such aid or services regardless of whether the vehicle is operating inside or outside of the vehicle's normal jurisdictional boundaries. So executing this agreement will allow for city of Fort Atkinson emergency vehicles to respond outside their jurisdiction with, with impunity. It also allows for other municipal emergency service providers to respond within the city. So staff does recommend that the council authorize the city manager to execute the joint powers agreement for twenty twenty-three.
I would move to approve, excuse me, I move to authorize the city manager to execute the twenty twenty-three joint powers agreement with Jefferson County for the county nine-one-one emergency system.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed? That motion carries. Ten B is the review and possible action to approve the contract modifications for the shared ride taxi service in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Thank you. The, the three, I believe it was, contract modifications that we discussed were the reduction in overall hours from fifteen thousand, nine hundred to nine thousand. The second was the increase in the hourly fare. I don't have it in front of me, but I think you guys do. Thirty-six dollars and fifty-three cents, I believe it was. And the, the third change in the contract was related to the overall service hours. We're going to eliminate that late night service. So those three constitute what we call a contract change order and we would put that forward to Brown Cab for our signature and theirs to govern the twenty twenty-three contract. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I think we went through them all pretty thoroughly over a number of meetings. I moved to approve the noted changes to the shared ride taxi contract with Running Inc. For twenty twenty-three twenty, yeah, sorry, including the service schedule noted hourly contract rate for service at thirty-six dollars, seventy-three cents and reduction in total contract hours to nine thousand.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions? All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ten C is the review and possible action to approve the fare schedule for the shared ride taxi service.
Yeah, thank you. And this is separate from the contract. This is the fares charged to the riders. As I said, it's roughly a sixty percent increase across the board. And I did have the individual fares up earlier. I believe you all have those in your packets. Happy to answer any questions that you might have related to this.
I've been real pleased with what hard work you put into this. And when we're faced with poor choices, raise the rates or maybe go without. I think raising the rates is the correct answer.
I agree. It's unfortunately a necessary step to, to keep the cab service functioning. So I'll make the motion to approve the increased fare schedule as noted for the shared ride taxi service in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
That takes us to ten D, which is the review and possible action relating to a rural ambulance agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the town of Hebron.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I will just present the, the general information about all five of these contracts as they do all mirror each other. And we will request separate action on them. So as we've mentioned tonight, our fire and EMS department will provide twenty-four seven full-time fire protection services and nine-one-one EMS services within the city limits starting on January first. The fire department also intends to provide these services. Uh, the fire department also intends to provide these services to portions of our surrounding townships. So when this, uh, when the city terminated the contract with the third-party service provider in September of twenty-one, um. The existing rural ambulance agreements between the city and those towns, uh, of Hebron, Jefferson, Koshknan, Oakland and Sumner became null and void. So over the last several months, uh, city staff has been working with staff and elected officials in these towns to negotiate the, uh, rural ambulance agreements. Uh, that are included in your packet to provide high-quality, efficient EMS service within the established service area. These agreements do mirror the previous EMS, uh, agreements in terms of service. And, uh, mirror the existing fire service agreements, uh, between the city and the townships in terms of annual cost increases. And that is, uh, it's tied to CPI with, uh, a minimum of two percent and a maximum of six percent. So these agreements, uh, are for three years from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five. With the goal of in twenty twenty-four negotiating, uh, new EMS agreements along with the, uh, fire. Um, renegotiation of the fire agreements to square up all of our boundaries. And have one agreement with each of these townships for both fire and EMS service. So that will, we will start that negotiations, those negotiations in twenty twenty-four. However, before you today, our, uh, contracts for the next three years for EMS, uh, service. Uh, the city did, um, uh, the, the city's current rate, uh, twenty twenty-two rate of seven twenty-two per capita. Uh, will be used as, as the base with a minimum of two percent and maximum of six percent, um, cost increase. In twenty twenty-three, we, uh, have prepared the towns to expect the maximum increase of six percent. You can see in the table, uh, in the memo that to be, uh. The estimated twenty twenty-three contract cost to all, uh, five of these towns. Note that it, we are portions of all the towns. Total of all forty-four thousand dollars, uh, in revenue to provide those services. So we did budget about forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, a couple of, uh, uh, populations changed a little bit. Um, however, uh, we're right in line with, with what we budgeted for revenue, uh, from the town contracts. Also, uh, just to note that we did, uh, I have included an excerpt of our, uh, resolution, uh, that the council approved. Um, in, in November, approving the twenty twenty-two schedule of fees and note that we did have, uh, different resident and non-resident. Um, response, um. Uh, fee amounts for EMS services. So, uh, staff does recommend that the city council approve each of the five proposed rural ambulance agreements with the towns of Hebron, Jefferson, Koshknan, Oakland and Sumner. For twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five, uh, through separate actions. I will also just note that the town of Koshknan agreement will likely be amended early in twenty twenty-three. To reflect the removal of the Bingham's Point area that was a late addition to the contracts, uh, in, I think in twenty twenty-one or. Um, where that was added when the Milton Fire Department, uh, could not provide, uh, service to that area. The town of Koshknan has, uh, sought out, uh, additional service from Milton, which is combining with. The Edgerton Fire District, uh, and they will be able to serve that, that area better. Uh, however, we did not, uh, have the. Uh, required population, legal description and map, uh, to make that change before approval. So we have, uh, I have. Talked to town of Koshknan representatives to, uh, indicate that we will, uh, once we get those documents, move forward to amend. Uh, the contract that, uh, we are recommending approval of tonight. I would be happy to answer any questions. And Fire Chief, uh, Roush is also on, on the Zoom.
I'm just curious, has there been anything that has come up in the discussion with the townships that you anticipate being? Points of discussion in that renegotiation in twenty twenty-four for going forward?
I think there's a few things that we've identified, uh, having some sort of a, uh. You know, we're not creating a, a district here, right? We have, uh, this is our, the, the city of Fort Atkinson Fire and EMS department. Uh, and we have contracts for service. However, there, there is a, a desire between the towns and the city to have consistent communication. Between the parties, so we would be looking at having some sort of a, an advisory commission or advisory committee. Uh, for ambulance and, and fire service to have, uh, just to keep those lines of communication open.
Uh, where each of the towns would have a representative on that or?
It would likely be a smaller committee, uh, and have represent, uh, representation from the city and then maybe a, a rotating representation from. The towns that we serve that have very small populations and, uh, Hebron, Jefferson, Oakland and Sumner, and then likely. Someone from the town of Koshknan would have a regular seat on that. But we will, we will look at that. We will also, uh, uh. Another item that would be negotiable would be the fee amounts for, um, services, uh, eliminating a resident and non-resident. Uh, different rates for that. Uh, in addition, the, uh, per capita cost, uh, for this service. Is significantly less than our surrounding municipalities, surrounding fire and EMS departments, so we would be looking to. Uh, to make sure that that number for both fire and EMS accurately represents the cost to provide the service. As well as the cost to replace equipment that is necessary, uh, to provide fire service in, uh, townships. Where there's not municipal water sources as well as, uh, EMS services. So we do have some, some work to do. Uh, in twenty twenty-four when we start to look at these again, but the, the towns have been good partners in this and I would hope that we can, uh, continue to. To partner, uh, on both fire and EMS, uh, into the future.
Thank you.
So basically, if I understand it correctly, the services we offer to other communities. We're not doing it at any negative rate. We're doing it at least a break-even rate for the city.
Well, we, we have a per capita cost that we're charging. I, I mean, there's, there are. The actual cost of EMS service. Is, is not readily available, right? I mean, there's not, uh, we, we don't have an analysis of, of. Um, the cost because it varies so much based on calls. In one year, the town of Hebron could have. Forty calls for service and the next year they could have two. Uh, so, uh, we, that's why we go with a per capita versus based on equalized value. Or, or, um, other items, but we will look at a, a, a formula that, that meets everybody's needs for that, uh, longer-term contract. With the towns.
Does that get relooked at regularly so that if we're doing it? At a negative position to the city, we can adjust it?
Well, this contract is for three years, but we will, in twenty twenty-four, when we start to look at the, the agreement for the next, for the longer term. Yes, we will absolutely be looking at, um, EMS costs and fire costs as well as equipment replacement costs and personnel costs.
Rebecca, you, you just touched on something I was going to ask about the, the memo notes that in twenty twenty-four, there'll be a renegotiation as you just mentioned. Now it includes who the cost of also purchasing and maintaining equipment. I believe that has not been, been the case in the past. Have we included that?
Uh, no, this was a, it was a per capita cost.
Right.
Right, so that it wasn't included because we didn't, uh, the city didn't have ambulances, right? I mean, the city had one ambulance. Uh, starting in two thousand eighteen, I believe, but prior to that did not have any ambulances.
Sure.
So, uh, as the city was not providing that service.
Yeah, okay. No, I appreciate that.
I will kick it off here. I move to approve the rural ambulance agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the town of Hebron for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Uh, ten E is the review and possible action relating to a rural ambulance agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the town of Jefferson for twenty twenty-three through twenty-five.
I, yeah, I moved to approve the rural ambulance agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the town of Jefferson for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five.
Second. Motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the motion carries. Uh, ten F is the review and possible action relating to a rural ambulance agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the town of Koshknan for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five.
I moved to approve the rural ambulance agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the town of Koshknan for two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
A motion and every second across the board, uh, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Uh, ten G is the review and possible action relating to rural ambulance agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the town of Oakland for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five.
I move to approve the rural ambulance agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the town of Oakland for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Uh, and then ten H, the review and possible action relating to a rural ambulance agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the town of Sumner for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five.
I move to approve the rural ambulance agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the town of Sumner for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and then a very fast second, uh, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
I will also just note that, uh, all of the towns have also approved these agreements already. Uh, we will need to add some, a couple, um. Items to each of those, so they will be re-executing, but they have all taken action at their respective town board meetings to approve these. Rural ambulance agreements.
Agenda item eleven miscellaneous. This evening we have none. Agenda item twelve claims appropriations and contract payments. Twelve A is the review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the director of finance and authorization of payment.
Move to approve list the verified claims presented by the director of finance and authorized payment.
Second.
So motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Shear?
Aye. Motion carries. Takes us to agenda item thirteen, which is adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this meeting is adjourned.